I think Shannon's picking through the media is what she's doing.
We're live on Facebook now.
Correct.
Thank you. Alice, do we have everybody in?
Yes, we do. And Barb Serrato said hers is working now, so she's on there.
Dr. Ross, it is now, what time is it, 10:20? I do apologize for the technical difficulties. I do believe we have all the bugs worked out. So if it's okay with you, we can go ahead and start the meeting.
All right. Good morning, friends, neighbors, and countrymen. I guess there's a lot of people on this call. We apologize. A lot of technical issues getting everybody hooked up with Zoom this morning. So Eric, do you want to take attendance?
Yes. Fritz Byers was here, but he had to go. He said he will be back. Dr. Fernandez?
Here.
Matthew Hironman?
Present.
Ted Kaczynski?
I'm here.
Donald Murray? Susan Postal?
Here.
Dr. Ross?
Here.
Barbara Serrato?
Here.
Thank you. Michelle Schultz?
Oh, here.
Dr. Donna Woodson?
Present.
There are eight. We have quorum.
Dr. Monk?
My fault, Dr. Monk. I apologize.
That's all right. Monk's a four-letter word. That's the way everybody likes to use it.
Thank you. I do apologize. Thank you. I do apologize.
No worries.
So we do have a quorum?
Yes, we do, sir.
Okay. So, you know, we're, this morning, we're faced with a reassessment of our original order. There are, we've received letters from an attorney that have put us in a position where we feel we need to go into executive session to discuss pending legal matters. So I apologize to everyone, but it probably will take us about an additional half an hour. Hopefully, that'll be at the maximum to go over those legal issues, and then we'll return and to open discussion. We may have to limit the ability to pay attention to our chat. We understand that people are very interested and/or upset on these decisions, and we're not taking that lightly. I know we received 53 emails, well-written, well-reasoned, from people who are concerned about, in particular, athletics. So we will be back after executive session. So I would entertain a motion from one of the board members to enter into executive session to discuss pending matters. Yes?
Just a point of clarification. I'd like to ask that we change the agenda to add an executive session before the update of school orders.
Okay, thank you. Yes. So first, we'll need a motion to change the agenda to add that.
Dr. Ross?
Yes.
I think Kevin Pittcock's on. I think he has a motion that he's crafted for the board's pleasure.
Prior to entering into executive session, Eric?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All you just need to do in terms of asking for executive session, say the reason is pending or imminent litigation.
Okay. So if we can entertain a motion from a board member to enter into executive session to discuss pending or imminent legal action?
So moved.
So we got Matt and Dr. Monk?
Correct.
So you want to take a roll call vote on entering to exec?
Fritz Byers, Dr. Fernandez?
Yeah.
Dr. Monk?
Yes.
Matt Hironman?
Yes.
Ted Kaczynski?
Yes.
Donald Murray? Susan Postal?
Yes.
Dr. Ross?
Yes.
Barbara Serrato?
Yes.
Michelle Schultz?
Yes.
Dr. Woodson?
Yes.
I hear that. Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, Alice, can you go ahead and get the board members and staff over to the breakout room, please?
Yes, he'll be just a moment.
Thank you. Relative to this, just go ahead and hit join breakout session, and then we'll be in a separate room on Zoom.
Something Alice is going to do, or do we need to do something?
Alice will be actually giving you permission to enter to that room.
Okay.
I'm assigning positions now. I'm going to run quick through, make sure I didn't miss any of this. All right. Okay, so I have you going into breakout room two. I'm opening the room, and you should be getting a notice to click into that room.
Should be on your screen.
Alice, I can hear the audio on the Facebook Live.
You can?
I can hear it.
Tell Shannon. Tell Shannon. Tell Shannon. Tell Shannon. Do I need to stop the stream, Shan? Do I need to stop the stream, Shan? Huh?
And we're trickling back.
I'm back.
Dr. Ross, I see you.
Okay. I see Richard. Let's see who else.
Make sure we got everybody. It's like magic. Let's see.
So there.
One, two, three.
Barbara.
Alice, could you make sure we have all the board members back on, please?
We could take attendance again.
Yeah.
If you want.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to for a, a motion and then a.
Yeah.
You gotta make sure we have quorum though, come back in. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We do have quorum. We could be missing Don. Kevin and Don, are you on?
You need to unmute yourself. You come out muted.
Kevin, Don, are you back on?
Don is.
Don is, I do see Don.
Thank you, Don.
Give me one second.
For those of us on phone, there is a delay of 60 seconds, but you have to hit the pound sign in order to, to override that.
So are we ready to take a vote to come out of executive session? I think I counted a quorum on there. I'm not sure, but.
Motion to exec, exit executive session.
Thank you, Matt. Do I have a second for that?
Second, Monk seconds.
Thank you, Dr. Monk. Eric, do you want to take a roll call vote on exiting this so we at least know everybody's with us? Eric?
Yeah, we're, I think Susan Postle's having a little, there she is. Okay, she's back on.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a, a motion to come out of executive session?
We do, from Matt and a second from Dr. Monk.
Thank you. Here's the roll call, please. Fritz Byers, Dr. Fernandez.
I'm here. Yeah, sorry.
That's right. Dr. Monk.
Yes.
Matt Harmon.
Yes.
Ted Kozarowski.
Yes.
Donald Murray.
Yes.
Susan Postle.
Yes.
Dr. Ross.
Yes.
Barbara Surrattu.
Yes.
Michelle Schultz.
Yes.
And Dr. Donna Woodson.
Yes.
All right. We're out at 11:01. There was no action taken during executive session.
Exactly.
All right.
No action taken, but we do have action to discuss the order, the amendment to the order.
Correct.
So would someone like to open that discussion?
I would like to ask, this is Richard representing State Tleet on the Board of Health. I would like to ask Kevin to explain quick, briefly, but precisely the reasoning behind the order as we have discussed in executive session. Dr. Ross, if you find that appropriate.
It's appropriate by me.
Sounds good.
Sure.
Yes. The amendment today is a technical one. It makes no substantive changes to the ordinance. It just makes it clear that the ordinance, that the order issued by the board is an emergency measure permitted to go into effect immediately under Ohio Revised Code Section 3709.21. Last week's order did not contain, even though I believe it was and is an emergency measure, it could not, it did not contain those words. So the amendment this week is merely to add the words either emergency or emergency measure or a reference to the proper Ohio Revised Code section to the order. In essence, that's it.
Okay. So with that understood, the only change in our prior order was to include the language designating that it was done as an emergency order to make our legal status clearer to the public and to the, to those concerned. Do we want to discuss this order or go ahead and take a vote with regard to it? We'll need a motion and a second.
Correct.
With regard to the order and we can go from there.
Motion to amend the order to add emergency language to it as stated by attorney.
Thank you.
Second.
Donald Murray.
Yes.
So, so we are. Yes, we're open to discussion at this point. I'm, I'm going to kick off myself very quickly here. We, believe me, I, I probably more than most other members of the board understand that the community is very concerned about the actions that we're taking here. And it is, we hope that in the process of listening to and reading the comments that we've received from the, from the community, in particular about athletics, that we're carefully looking at those things. That today's order does not mean that we could not meet within 24 hours to amend that order after additional due consideration and discussion. Our exec, our executive director, health commissioner, Eric Zadinsky is in constant contact with all the schools in the county on a weekly basis. And obviously, if there are changes or, or thoughts or things that the board needs to consider, we can meet within 24 hours to reconsider amending this order. There are other board members, I'm sure, who want to comment at this particular point. I personally feel we should go ahead and pass this amended order without substantive changes. That's where I'm coming down on it. And I believe that I just want the public to understand that we are paying careful attention to both the positive comments that we've received in support of the action that we've taken and to those that are critiquing it. And we're doing our best to follow public health and medical science in terms of our decision making. And we're hoping that our decision is best for all the people in Lucas County. And we understand that we've got that general concern to be balanced against individual rights. And it's a very difficult balancing act for us in the middle of a very dangerous situation with this deadly virus. So that's my comment. I would be willing to hear from other board members before we actually vote on the amended order.
This is Richard one more time. As this, as we are amending to add the word emergency as we intended originally, I would ask Dr. Eric Shadinsky, our health commissioner, to concisely, perhaps slowly, so that we can soak it in, outline the reasoning such that this, we are in a state of emergency in Lucas County in addressing our mitigation strategy, perhaps relating to hospitals, new case numbers and percentage of tests positive in the past 14 days.
Eric, would you like to chip in at this point?
Yeah, sure. I, I can go ahead and do that. Yes, the, as we discussed last week, really has, not much has changed in the way of numbers that would, would force us to, to maybe not go into an order. Actually, some of them have even become worse. We, we've risen up in our cases of 100,000, per 100,000 to, yesterday was 777. We do know that the cutoff is 100 for High Eastern County. So we're, we're seven plus times that. You know, when we look at the CDC website and look at high risk transmission possibilities in schools, their cutoff is, is 200 and above is, is a, is a high risk or the highest. The, the concept of the order, again, it was extremely well thought out in, in the sense of what is it going to do to our community? But on the flip side, you know, again, what, what would be the benefits? And, and the, the reasoning behind the order itself, the way that it was crafted, is that it did, it compressed, it compressed what we're, what we're trying to do into a time where we know that many of the students will already be off in, in holiday. However, you know, again, sandwiching this between a major holiday of Thanksgiving and the first of the year, we, we know that we're going to have some sort of spike after Thanksgiving and we know we're going to have it after, after the first of the year. So these timeframes are, are very relevant i- in, in trying to, again, keep disease out of the schools, but then keep it out of the community as well, and again, from spreading. So though, that's why the timeframe, the January 11th timeframe, again, for me, when we started creating this order, it really is, it's, it's a hard date as far as I'm concerned, unless, unless we see significant concerns in the community. And, and you know, right now, we're, we're hoping that the order, the order allows us to, to see a decrease or at least a steadying from, from pausing, if you would, a steadying of disease states. So January 11th, I, I fully expect that, again, like I said, unless we have something that is, is proportionally out of, out of bounds, that, that would be a, our return to, a return to schooling. And I think that's important for everybody to know that this isn't, this isn't to keep everybody off for three, four, five months. It was, it was really truly precision and precisely produced, if you would, to make sure that we, we capture the concerns during these holiday periods. If, if we, if we look at the hospitals, the, the hospital, hospitals continue to tell us that, you know, beds are being filled up, the, the issues with vents, the, the personnel. So we, we do see, we do see increases in our hospital systems. And, and again, you know, we talk about the vaccine and that did play a little bit into the role of, of getting us to a point where we could be a little bit more stable. We know the vaccine is coming, so there, there is some hope here. So all this combined together created the, this idea of let's keep K through six in, in school, because again, we, we know the background, we know the research from that. They may not be spreading it as much and are able to, to actually be infected as much as some of these, some of the older kids. And so that was the split from K through six and then seven to 12. And we do know that, again, extracurricular and sports activities are, are, you know, are very important to all of us. But again, we're, we're asking that schools will go virtual, you know, sports are there, they're adding, again, to the community spread. And so all those things were taken in consideration and again, came up with the order. So hopefully that was concise enough.
What I hear is that, and I pulled it up, so, so I'm looking at the CDC indicators and it's what you referenced, Eric. It's that the highest risk of transmission in schools, which may trigger our, our threshold for closing schools is 200 cases per 100,000. We are over 700. Our hospital beds are filling. And when our hospitals are full, they can no longer respond appropriately to preventable illness and disease like heart attacks, like a urinary tract infection. This is precisely the problem we first encountered early on. That was by, by good reason, something to be fearful of, because we rely on our hospitals to respond to these emergencies. We all do. This is a unifying factor. Those are the two things that stood out for me and, and the timeline, as Eric indicated, is responsive to, to what is going to be a difficult time to, to manage this virus for this period of time, this short period of time. That's what I heard and that's what I punctuate. Sorry, Dr. Monk.
I would chip in one other thing, that the, that the number of days that we're asking people to be out fits with the epidemiology of this particular virus. In other words, by, this, this gives a chance for cases to stay if they are out there asymptomatic to be staying in the home rather than in the schools and adding gas to the fire. So, so what we're trying to do is to pick a, a set of, of timeframes that will actually match up with the, with the nature of this virus and the duration of the illness that can happen with this virus or the duration of virus shedding. So part of the, the, the timing of this is to reduce that transmission through the schools out into the community after a big holiday like Thanksgiving and then again, another one that would happen at Christmas. So that's our thinking. Again, our, our motivation is to try to reduce the disease in the community. And we recognize how painful it is when we're asking certain activities to not happen. But again, we are, instead of just, we're not just the highest, we're three times or more the highest level of cases that we ought to be considered, considering shutting the schools because of high risk of transmission. And our, our positivity rates are way above that level as well in our testing, which means that we have pretty severe prevalence. One other piece of data that I think the board may be aware of, but others may not, is that we've been testing sewage, looking for virus particles. And what we're seeing is a 100-fold increase, 100-fold increase in the number of virus particles in the sewage, in, in, in our testing in late November. And what that tells us is, is two weeks later, we're going to get slammed, because the sewage usually is, is showing us the virus is in circulation before we actually see the, the people get sick and the cases out there. So every indication is, is that we're heading into more trouble, not less trouble. And if we can shut things down to whatever extent we can in our, in our county at this point, through, through this holiday period, I think that is why we're taking this action is to try to protect as many people as possible from this devastating illness. So others from the board, would, would they like to comment?
Dr. Ross, real quick, I, I want to remind the board too and the community that the board did pass a stay at home advisory. So that linked with the other things that the board is attempting to do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Does provide, I, I think, a, a really good foundation to protect in the community. But again, the stay at home advisory i- is there and hopefully people are following that, again, coupled with what we're, what you're trying to do today, should give us some, some protection. So I thank you.
Other board members? We are still actually discussing whether, whether we will vote on our order as amended with the emergency language. And so additional board members want to weigh in at this point? Or should we move to a vote on that order?
Dr. Ross, I would call a question.
All right. Thank you, Matt.
I'll second that.
All right. Monk seconds it. So Eric, would you like to call the roll on, on our amended order?
Yes, roll call. Fritz Byers. Dr. Fernandez?
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Monk?
Present.
Matt Heirman?
Yes.
Ted Kozrowski?
Yes.
Donald Murray?
Yes.
Susan Postle?
Yes.
Dr. Ross?
Yes.
Barb Serontu?
No.
Michelle Schultz?
Yes.
Dr. Donna Woodson?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Ross, the, the amended order has passed. We will make sure that those corrections are, are, are made and appropriate and we'll, we'll move from there.
So I don't know, would any, any of the board members, I mean, obviously, we've got a lot of people on, on our public presentation of, of this deliberation. Do any of the other board members want to weigh in on their thoughts about this? Again, I would remind the public that we are trying to do our best and we're trying to do our best using public health science and we understand the concerns. Again, I think everybody on this, on this meeting among the Board of Health have been reading the letters that are coming or the emails that are coming from people that are concerned about the actions that we're taking. We need to understand, for those of you that feel we're, we're badly mistaken here, that we're getting similar numbers or even more in support for what we're doing. It's a very difficult balancing act. And I think that the, the board understands the difficulties that we're asking people to endure for the next couple of weeks. And while we continue to deliberate on this. And again, the fact that we've passed this order today does not mean that next week we couldn't reverse it. So we will continue to take public input. You're welcome to continue to email our health commissioner and to email me. We'll read every single one of them. I don't know if we, there's so many, I don't know if we can actually respond individually to them. I think that one other thing that people should understand is, is that, you know, there is a diversity of opinion within our board about this. This is not carved in stone. So. Any additional comments from board members? This was our only business today, by the way, so.
Yes, Dr. Ross, Dr. Monk here.
Yes.
I would, I would ask Dr. Zeguninski to, to, to briefly inform the public what the board can, can do and what the board can't do. There's been a lot of questions or statements of the fact that, that, that the board is picking on the schools and, and not on businesses, because we can control the schools, quote unquote, but we can't control the businesses. And I think if, if Dr. Zeguninski could, could inform the public as to exactly what the, the Board of Health, the Health Department can do and what they can't do.
Dr. Monk, thank you. I will ask Kevin to also help, help with the answer to the question, but succinctly i- is that we are a creature of statute, statute. And really, the Ohio revised code gives us, you know, so, some various, some very strong powers in, in certain areas. They, they don't give us powers in, in others. And the idea of bars and restaurants and, and, and other buildings being, if you would, shut down, paused, the, the, the statute doesn't give us that ability. However, it does, and again, not to get too deep, too down in the weeds. I do believe that the ability to, again, precision, I use precision again, to precision address issues in buildings and, and, and if you would, organizations, does exist through quarantine isolation and if you will, the Ohio, Ohio regulations, sections, excuse me, higher reviews code sections. But again, it, it doesn't, it doesn't give us a, a, a sweeping wand to take care of any issues or any problems that might stem in those, in those other facilities. I, I will tell you this, Dr. Monk, speaking with a number of the board members, they do, and, and other officials and other entities, they do wish that we had the ability to, again, immediately close things down and, and take sweeping actions for the community. But that just is, that just is not available to us.
Thank you.
Sure. I don't know if Kevin Pittcock would like to chime in or not.
Well, Eric, you're, you're correct. I mean, Ohio revised code section 3707.26 allows the board to close schools in times of either a pandemic epidemic contagious disease. It gives the board that express, express authority. However, the board does not have that authority regarding other businesses, whether it be bars, casinos, whatever. To the extent that they were shut down earlier this year, those were all orders issued by the Ohio Department of Health, which enjoys much broader authority than a local county Board of Health. That's it.
I think those points of clarification are extremely important to our public. Thank you.
Dr. Ross, I.
Oh, I, if there are no further comments from the board, I think that was our only business today. Am I correct on that, on the agenda?
Yes, Dr. Ross.
Should I entertain a motion for adjournment?
Correct.
Don't move, Monk.
Back there, Matt Heirman.
Matt Heirman seconds. Monk moves. You want to take a vote, Eric? Or shall we just?
Just, anybody does not want to adjourn, I, I guess they could voice their opinion. Everybody wants to adjourn?
No, hearing no nays, we'll assume this meeting is adjourned at 11:22 a.m.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, all. Stay safe. Be well.
Yeah.